Good evening. Pursuant to the bylaws and applicable-- next of pursuit. To the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJ SA 10, 4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertisers such notice from the Home News Review, the Board Office on cable vision channel 118, directly via channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Council of Spur. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, June 10, 2014. The Board will take formal action on the payment of bills. What's the matter?
The Overage Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the Board, or members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio and video recording devices. And I is that the acronym ORIM does not interfere in all business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording only considered privately recorded by an individual in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future issue of this Board meeting. Worsely?
Yeah.
Prima?
Here.
Dunn?
Present.
Poppy?
Here.
London?
Here.
Singh?
Silikowski?
Weber?
Here.
Adriani?
Here.
Foreigner exists?
Thank you.
Pleasure to be here. Good morning. Good afternoon. Good evening.
The United States of America, into your republic, with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, infinite, and just as for all.
Mr. Mara has done the following review of the state key--
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that anything that is-- the bold and yellow was not on the agenda. That was sent home on Friday, so you're seeing it for the first time. But I hope it's the first time that they're seeing it.
Thank you. Just as a note, so I don't forget, we had a discussion about graduations. We're kind of keeping our notes for-- but if we could get representations somehow for the elementary school. I'm going to ask John Torre to make copies. I just came to the amount of everybody. If there is, please, if there is one or two ceremonies at the elementary school that you could make, a moving up ceremony, that would be appreciated. You could just let me know. Or inform Mr. Mara. He'll see if he can get somebody to everyone. You know, if you're working most during the day with one or there's two or three of them, please do. Thank you.
I'm scheduled for federal duty every week, but it's one of those years where I call in, so I don't know. Maybe I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Donna, I just want to make a note because I'm looking over your shoulder and I see that you have the schools listed, but some of the schools do not have their moving up ceremony in their position. So, you might want to clarify that. I don't know whether they allow--
Of course, someone says OVHS, but I don't know about the others.
But I know Madison Park, okay, they have on their OVHS. All right, he does say it. I didn't see it on there.
No, they're saying--
Okay.
The others are at their school.
It looks like, I didn't see that additional one.
We don't need to lose when the graduations are.
Okay. A full minute. Right recognition. If there's any discussion on that. We have a lot of champions, championships, ice hockey, the course, volleyball, et cetera. We have National Spanish exam. I'll very much like that. Mr. Snow?
Well, this one is a group of students who, former McDivitt students and current McDivitt students, who raised money for a McDivitt graduate student, Ryan Radigan, who was hospitalized. He has since passed from his illness, but we still felt it was important to recognize the students who tried to contribute to better his life.
I don't know if this would be a recognition, but is everybody aware about--
I sent out the letter to the Board, so-- They enjoyed, yeah. So, it's possibly for them, they have to decide if they can raise a fund for this service of course.
Superintendent, do you have a progress report?
Just want to tie into that progress towards our Math in Focus program and-- going forward and the future of the program at the middle school. And Dr. G. Forrow will present at the--
Going back to Martin Band, it's going to be quite an enormous challenge to have him perform in that single number of 1,000 people, probably between 50 days to do it at each. But it's amazing, we just continue with the great thing.
Special committee, special, you know, we have--
We have building new grounds, which is tomorrow night.
And Trumella has something for policy, yeah, policy.
And I guess curriculum and technology is on this one. I don't think we put it out on that.
And if the Board feels it necessary to sit back, special meetings along, there's plenty of good apologies, they do so, but as an address--
I just wanted to clear out, Dr. Forrow, you wanted to do the presentation?
Yeah, I wanted to just present the proposal to them.
It's just going to present up information, and if you have any questions going forward, it's not into adoption, it's just keep the Board informed that I asked her to be here tonight. Because it is a shift in our delivery mechanism, I wanted to advise the Board.
Can I, you're not doing this at the meeting, the reading meeting?
I was going to present it right now, if that's possible.
Okay.
Now, I could present it visually, or I have a handout. Did everyone get the handout that I had over here for the agenda?
You can just share it to us.
Okay, great.
Do you want to use another one?
It's not necessary. If we want to move along quickly, it's not necessary. I think it's all the information that I would present here would be something that would be sitting in front of you.
Thank you.
Excuse my back. I'll wait till you get this, and then-- Okay, I'll begin.
Wait, wait, do you want to sit up here first, so you can face everyone else?
I'll sit right next to you. You don't have to. You sit right next to you? Okay. Okay, I might as well stand so you can actually see me. It looks like I'm sitting. Okay. Basically, this proposal was generated after conversation with elementary school teachers, after the several workshops we conducted this past school year for Math in Focus. We've had three workshops and one final one that's coming up at the end of June. And during those workshops, the teachers revisit what's going on now in the classroom because of the implementation is now sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. This year is the full-fledged implementation at the middle school. So, in reviewing the new program and comparing it to the traditional program that was in place, one of the suggestions made by many teachers, and I had even the grade levels in separate workshops, and this recommendation came up, across all three grade levels, that they wanted to revisit how we place students in the middle school in the tiered levels that we currently have. Now, currently, we have the three-tiered levels that are on the top of the handout, where we have a regular enrichment and honors level. And the way it's designed is that children are placed based on a diagnostic, based on their New Jersey S scores, based on marking period grades, and they're placed in one of those three levels. Now, if they're placed in the honors level, if they're not recommended by the end of marking period one in grade six for that honors level, because it traditionally followed the Glencoe program, which is different than the Math in Focus, then that child would not have an opportunity to enter the honors level again until they enter grade nine. Because those two programs are so diverse, there is no way that a child would easily transition without losing information moving from one program to the other. So, if the child was not identified early on, they couldn't enter the honors level. So, that was a concern with the teachers, because they felt that middle school typically is a time that children mature academically, and they don't necessarily develop in time as they enter grade six, and they develop over time over those three years. And they felt that we were preventing children from the challenge of an honors level because we were so rigid with our standards in terms of being part of this level. That went hand in hand with the Math in Focus implementation, because in looking at the Math in Focus, the rigors presented by the Math in Focus program actually, in some cases, are much higher than the traditional program. And we were finding children in the enriched level were actually doing work that was much more difficult than those children that were in the honors level. So, taking those two things in mind, the teachers presented the suggestion, and we developed this proposal together, that rather than having three levels, that we now have two levels for math placement. And what this will allow is, most importantly, that if children are not identified entering grade six as an honors level student, they can be evaluated throughout that entire school year, and if a teacher sees that that child is able to do the more rigorous work, they could then move up to that honors level within that school year, because we're using the same program in both levels. So, this allows that transition upward and also in the other direction. If a child is in a situation where now the work is too difficult, and they're faltering, and they need to move back a level, we can allow that as well, because we're working within the same program. So, basically, the proposal is that, starting with this incoming grade six class, we would have in grade six a non-honors, a non-honors level and an enriched level. That enriched level would encompass what we would consider now honors and enriched level students. So, it would be a larger group of students that would be able to do the more challenging work. And then throughout grade six, as children develop and are able to assume the responsibilities of the difficult, you know, more difficult work, teachers can recommend that they move upward, and that's going to be like a fluid motion, backwards and forwards, depending. So, we are really answering the district goal of providing our children the opportunity to grow, to challenge them, to prepare them for the expectations of the Common Core standards, especially the expectations of the PAR standardized testing. And we're offering that opportunity to all students at all times, and not just as soon as they enter the school year, as a grade six student. So, that's the recommendation. That's basically the main change, and it's for the better, because now we are addressing the needs of the students on an ongoing basis, as opposed to just an initial placement exam. Any questions? And I put in here the background of the change. I put also the current design versus the proposed design, and that it would be no cost to the district doing this. And the immediate means how we would have to support our teachers initially. And I know that in our conversation, we met last week, Mr. Zividino, Ms. Kibler, Mr. Maranzoli, Mr. Vezes, we met, we discussed concerns. One of the concerns is that the first year of this design, the teachers would have to really focus on differentiating their instruction, because now they're going to have a larger group of students with a larger gap of learning abilities, but they would have to be able to address all those learning needs, because the group is not going to be as homogeneous as it is, you know, currently. So, that was one of the concerns. But overall, we feel that this program can meet this challenge and serve the children better, because we're allowing them to grow without putting boundaries on their growth. Any questions?
Yes. I'm looking at the grade eight here, where we have Math in Focus, three plus, and then quadratics, and algebra one. Currently, don't we have to use entering ninth grade ready for algebra?
What we have--
And geometry?
Yes. What we have, if we, according to the current program, right now, our current honors eighth grade students are in the Glencoe program, which is the same textbook that's being used at the high school. And we compared the contents of the current book, which is more traditional, to the Math in Focus, and the one topic that's missing in the Math in Focus program, because it's fewer topics, but digging deeper within each concept, is the quadratics. And we went over the pacing chart, and it was decided that we would be able to cover the entire curriculum with an honors group of students by March, and then just present that additional topic to supplement, so it would be the full curriculum of Algebra One.
So, will these students leave eighth grade?
They would be, they would be ready.
For geometry?
If they're in the honors level, they'd be ready for geometry and possibly geometry and Algebra Two, the way we made the design.
Okay. And I have an expectation about this term.
Do you have a recommendation of a different term?
No, it's just--
Share the same.
Okay.
It's time for derivatives.
It's negative to be--
So, should we just, you know, when we put it down, I was making a distinction between the two. This has not gone out to anyone. And certainly, I welcome feedback. No, no, should we put grade six math and just leave it generally grade six math?
I was never under the pressure--
No, we just regular grade, we call it regularly six math. I made the distinction on this chart.
Oh, okay.
No, 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 no. I made the distinction on the chart for you. It's basically going to be grade six math, enriched level. Grade seven math, honors level. Grade eight math, honors level. Yes, absolutely.
And the year except for the teachers that have been to the enrichment and the honors, they all came to the math?
Yes, because we meet, well, when this, this design was discussed, it was discussed separately within each grade level, and then we had a collaborative meeting where we all meet, both middle schools, and we refined this proposal, and this is the input of all the teachers present. And I also presented, I'm sorry, I also presented this proposal and to get feedback from the high school teachers, and they were very, very supportive of this.
So, grade six, there's been a non-honor, which is just regular grade six math, and then an enrichment math, essentially, right?
Yes. And they're working out of the same textbook.
Okay. So, when they go from grade six to grade seven, from grade six enriched to grade seven, they'll be going in grade seven honors, right? Now, and I guess because my brain is fixated on the three levels right now, where you have the regular grade six, the enrichment, and then the honors. So, if a student in the enriched level, that's grade six, is not really succeeding very high in enriched, would they get put back into the non-honors in grade seven, and would be, would it almost be a repetitiveness of what they did prior?
No, because if, and that's a good question. No, because they are working all within the same book. So, in grade six, they're working in course one, both levels. Grade seven, they're working in course two, and grade eight, they're working in course three. And that's what allows that transition between the two levels easily, because it's the same textbook. It's not that they're going to see a different textbook, they're just going to be required to do perhaps work that's not quite as difficult for them. So, let's say, for instance, a child who's in enriched in grade six and doesn't, at the end of marking period four, doesn't do well and struggles, then that child would be considered for grade seven math, not the honors level. And contrarily, the child that's in the grade six regular, but performs very well and may not have gotten into enriched by the end of that year, could be considered for honors.
And then they wouldn't have missed a beat, though. They wouldn't have been, they won't be going into grade seven honors, kind of where they're missing something that grade six, which would kind of--
No, because within grade six, it's the common, it's the standards and the Common Core for grade six. They're just doing more challenging exercises, but the concepts they're learning aren't the same.
What happens to the pool of students who are right in the middle, who can do very well, but when put into a honors class, they're not going to do as well? Right now, with the three degrees, regular, enriched, and honors, you have that moderate challenging course. Now, you're going to try to group them in enriched or non-honors. And I feel that personally, there's going to be a group of students right in the middle who's going to find the honors too challenging and the non-honors not challenging enough. So, what happens to that middle group of students?
Well, this design actually mirrors what happens at the high school, because at the high school, we have the CP and we have the honors level. And we also have a level that provides support for those students that require additional, you know, remediation. So, we have what was now called this year the elements course, it's the lower level. So, this actually transitions well to the high school, as opposed to having the three levels, which is not existent at the high school, where you have two different varieties of the higher achievers. And now, at the high school, we have the honors and we have the regular CP. So, now, if a child is doing, let's say, not as C work in an honors level, and at the end of that sixth grade year, we may reconsider and say, you know what, let's have that child begin in a regular grade seven math and support whatever, whatever that child needs additional practice doing, perhaps explanation, exercises, whatever. And if that child shows improvement, because certainly they must have shown the ability having been placed in the enriched level, then we can move them up to the honors. And that's the beauty of this design, is that if the decision is made to move them down, it doesn't have to be permanent, where the way it is now, it's you're in this, you're in this level, and you stay in this level, whether you're doing well in it or not. You're supposed to be an honors level student. So, this is allowing, when, when all other support mechanisms do not work, I'm not saying if a child is poorly on a test, they move down a level. I'm saying if a child has shown effort, extra practice, whether they come to read with the teacher, whatever, and everything has been put in place, and that child still doesn't improve, then that child can move down a level. So, there's that ability to strengthen those skills and have that child not struggle to the point where they're performing very well.
Can you imagine that, if you give them from non-honors to enriched or honors, how's that going to work? Is that going to compute with their schedule? If you can be able to go up and down?
Well, that's why we had the two middle school principals available when we had this conversation, because in their scheduling, that was one of the questions. And they actually said, by having only three levels of math, actually facilitated the scheduling process, as opposed to hindering it. So, they felt it actually would make it easier for them, because they wouldn't have to have those three separate levels. So, they were on board. That didn't come up as a concern in our conversation, and they realized that this movement would take place from marking period to marking period. And we don't expect that the movement is going to be a tremendous number of students, because if we place them well, and, you know, and thoroughly look at their skills entering grade six, overall, for the most part, we've done a very good job, and the guidance councils have done a very good job with the information, placing students as best possible. But as we know, you know, students wake up, they decide they love math all of a sudden, and they work harder, and they, and they have a teacher that inspires them, and so we want to, we really want to reward those kids.
Dean, is, since you're not, one of the ones who's going to be working out of the same book, is there enough latitude for the honors kids to not walk through that part of it? And I mean, really, is it going to be sufficient to support that whole thing for the whole year?
I would say yes, based on the feedback from the teachers, that the program itself has so much substance, and there's many exercises and activities in this program that the children never get an opportunity to cover in completion. So, it does provide the A, B, C type of questions based on, you know, the child's performance. So, the book certainly supports it, and we don't have any questions about that, because there, there's a lot to it. Less topics, but a lot to each concept.
I understand, I'm sure I can--
I was just going to say, so right now, a student that's in grade six and seven, that would be moving up to seven and eight next year, if they're in enriched or in honors, they'll go into the enriched program next year, or are they--
This is going to be phased in.
Yes. It's going to be phased in. I have that in very small print underneath the second chart. So, if a child is currently exiting grade six as an honors level student, they've finished pre-algebra, so next year, they will, and they're intending on it, they'll be going into the Algebra One book that's being used at the high school. So, they'll stay in that traditional program, and this will be phased in.
And is no problem implementing it in 14, 15, even though it's now it's June, presenting it in June, and September is just--
In terms of teachers--
Changing, changing from the three levels to the two.
In terms of the teachers in the middle school, they're ready. In fact, again, they're the ones that requested this change. We had conversation with some, with the principals, one of Ms. Kibler's last meetings, that we had all the principals around, I think it was one of the budget meetings for the textbooks and so forth, we presented this to them, and we asked them for their feedback. They gave us their feedback. In fact, Dr. Ferry actually wrote an email, and he asked his colleagues, you know, what do you think? And their concern was, because the first proposal from the teachers was that there'd be no level in grade six. And that was a concern, because we felt, especially the elementary principals, some voiced that they liked the levels being available for students who were their higher achievers to be rewarded for that, for their performance. So, we listened to that, we brought that back to the teachers, they discussed it, and that's why we created the two different levels here. So, they're on board. And in terms of the parents, when both middle school principals had their fifth grade orientation for entering middle school, no information was shared in terms of this, because I didn't get their approval, but nothing was also promised to them that they would be part of that other design as well. So, we just talked about, this is the math program we use and we kept it very general.
Now, it becomes critical for differentiating the instruction when you're in that two-tier system. And that's going to be a bit more challenging for the teachers, in my view. And I think that students who are having difficulties are going to be a burden on the rest of students, because differentiating instruction is critical, but a lot of times it's who are in lower tier, you know, are the ones that do not benefit. So, I'm concerned that there's only going to be two tiers, especially with elementary school kids coming out, having 45 minutes or an hour a day in math, and all of a sudden they're going into a 45, 50-minute session, where it's going to be more rigorous, it's going to be a lot more difficult. And not to have three tiers, I'm concerned about that.
I think you also had a valid point with the not-quite honors, but--
Right. It's the area, you know, this is--
Yeah, and that's a very--
Right, this is very fine line from kids coming out of elementary, and all of a sudden it would be two-tiered, where you're going to be, you know, regular, and then you would be, you know, enriched or honors. That's a little disconcerting, especially if that's in--
Formation of lives.
Right.
Okay, so, exiting grade five, under the current program, they would be going into the three levels. So, your top, let's say, your top 25% would be between those two levels, the enriched and the honors. And your regular group would be those children that didn't meet those, those requirements to enter those two levels. Those regular children are still going to be in that same group. What we did, from the tradition, from the current program to the proposal, is we took the enriched children and combined them with the honors level children, based on the placement criteria we follow from exiting grade five, and we put those children together. So, the regular level is really unchanged. What we did was we made the enriched and the honors, we put those together.
Consolidate them, but--
Right.
But the enriched also have--
But that goes back to now, now that goes back to a comment made by the teachers, that they were recognizing that the children that were in the honors level were actually not being exposed to the topics that the children in the enriched level were exposed to. The children in the enriched level are in Math in Focus. The children in the honors level are in Glencoe. The Glencoe is not as rigorous as the Math in Focus, that's what we're finding out. So, we had enriched children explaining things to the honors level when it should really quite be the opposite. So, that's where this all came about, where they were seeing children who were not considered for honors were actually doing more difficult exercises because of the way the program presented the information. So, now you have the enriched and the honors combined.
Right, under Math in Focus now.
Yes.
Right.
So that's better because now you're offering a challenge to the honors and they're, really, you're allowing growth for that enriched group to go beyond. I mean, they're showing growth, they're showing that they're, they're doing as well as in some concepts, the honors level children.
What will be the ratio of sections?
Well, right now, um...
Would it be 60% non honors, 40% enriched, honors? What's, what's the...
Well, right now, I can tell you the design right now. Of course, it's based on the incoming class, on, on the placement criteria that's used. But right now, in a grade six level in Paul Sandberg, we have two honors. And then every team has an enriched. So there are three teams, you have three enriched and you have two honors. So that's approximately maybe 50 honors children. And we're working, you know, with a, with a head count professor, about 25. Okay, so 75 enriched, 50 honors. In Jonas Saw, we have one class of honors. So now you have about 75 children between the both schools that are honors. And again, you have the three different teams, each having an enriched level, so 75. So you have 150 enriched and you have the 75 honors. And that will be combined to be that top group. That's based on this year's, and in past years, that seems to be the case, that those are the number of sections between both schools. So you just, you're, you're basically combining those two levels together. So the gap shouldn't be that big. So you're not going to have that struggling learner in that group. You're going to have those children that are high achieving. And you do have those children that are enriched, that just missed the honors by this much. So now they're given that leeway to grow even further. Because they're not exposed to the same material.
Jean, with somebody who misses a cut to go to the honors program, or the enriched program, does the teacher at the regular level counteract the fact that maybe a particular child is more capable than most of his classmates, but not quite capable to make the enriched at that point and give them assignments out of the book to facilitate...
And absolutely. And that's the whole purpose of this design, exactly what you're saying. Is that when a teacher sees that child mature, entering as, you know, a, a new sixth grader and now becoming more accustomed to being a middle schooler and now growing with confidence in the math program, yes, that's absolutely what we want. A teacher to say, you've shown that you're able to move forward and do even more difficult. And actually, because you're the same book, I can test that ability by giving you some of those questions. And if you do well, make the recommendation to move on to the other class. So that's the whole purpose of it, exactly what you said. And in the current design, they can't do that. Any other questions? So I have your approval. Well, I, I...
Certainly in action, I will, I will, you know, be able to give Jean more of a definitive approval, just, I want to be here from the board, let the voice of concerns, so forth. I think there still needs to be a little more articulation, not only, you know, vertically, but through maybe, you know, some of the students. Have you had a conversation with, with Mitch class and Tewey about how this address the needs of the special ed population?
No, I didn't speak with them because honestly, it didn't impact that group because the, the curriculum that we follow for the regular class would not be changed. This is really impacting the, the higher tiers that were allowing that, that ability to move back and forth. So it's not impacting how the in-class resources conducted, how the academic support was conducted. That's all, you know, intact. You know, the same curriculum, the same pacing is, is going to be maintained.
Look, Rich, you had a question about leveled and a wider range. You know, I'm, I'm looking at it the other way. Where can the regular classroom, you would have a larger disparity of abilities in the regular as opposed to the honors and enriched? Because those children at least would have something in which they have strength in math to begin with. So whether they are the high honors and super achievers in math or have the aptitude, that they would be able to work together and differentiate, you know, the instruction for the higher level would be more difficult questions or more activities. Whereas in the other section, you have children who are not classified, but who might have little to no aptitude of math, just up to where that cutoff is.
And that, and what we have in place right now is that academic support pushing that supports that student.
I think some of the challenges will be, you know, you very well bring up that in the general education, a regular class differentiation needs to be part of the day. Whereas in the, in the previous, enriched and honors, they're much more homogeneously grouped. So differentiation, differentiation was less part of the teaching requirement there. And now that you'll have a little more heterogeneous grouping in there, although at the top end, it will require more differentiation.
And that's what I have right here, immediate needs to implement this new proposed design. Exactly what you just said. The teachers need to be aware of the, the diversity in that group because you're going to have a gap of learning needs and they need to address that. We have the textbooks. We have enough textbooks. Yes, we have enough textbooks because right now, we have classroom sets available. So the students are not going to have that luxury of having a classroom set because that was extra books that we had available. Because the grade six program was implemented, it was a pilot, that HMH provided those textbooks to us and we had a lot of extra. And, and, and having the extra, they made classroom sets. So now we're able to take those classroom sets and give it to those other students.
And is there a common line component?
Yes.
So all the students would be able to not have to take the textbook home?
Absolutely, they have that, they have had that available to them since the beginning of the program.
Any other questions?
Anyone else?
Well, thank you, thank you for listening to me. Facilities uses will be next. I know we have a conversation...
Just under the superintendent request, progress first, so we'll call it then. If we have the availability, absent, and Roseanne Moran has been doing a tremendous amount of work. Hopefully we'll have at that time, end of the year, digital yearbook that can be presented to the board at that meeting. I hope I'm not putting too much pressure on Roseanne. We'll all help finish it.
Put it on the principals, they need to get the rest of the pictures.
And that'll be the end of progress first, okay? Digital yearbook, all the accomplishments of this board of education, our students and our staff, sort of 13, 14 students. No, 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 we're trying something new. We're going to do a digital yearbook for the whole school district. Got that, Roseanne?
It's already in the workshop. We got a lot done.
Is there anything that we want to share with everybody else that wasn't there in terms of facility use? Is there anything we need to be aware of?
We're going to, with this touch that we're planning to meet in August, have a, or maybe some point later July, to have a facilities use meeting just for the intent of, to iron out our policy on, on the facility use. Would you agree to that?
I would agree, yeah, I would agree.
For those of you who aren't at that meeting, there was some, there was some concern about consistency. So we talked about it in policy. So it looks like we're going to revise the policy on...
Revise some of the policy, even the facilities.
Not just the policy, but also the regulation and the forms that are used. Just type the entire process.
Right, exactly.
So if anybody has any questions?
And I think some of that was also contingent upon finding out what kind of the whole, closing.
Correct. So if anybody has any questions, you know, to ask us before we speak otherwise, we don't want to be, okay, I don't understand, so, we don't know what to do. Is there any of the residents, is there anybody who has a competition? Yes. I miss the bill list?
No.
Oh, well, tonight we'll all be taking action on the bill list. So if there's anyone who has any questions or comments, concerns about the bill list, which is how agenda, or sorry, from Paul Duncan, June Europe. Moving forward, my name is Don Er. All right, athletics. Any questions here? This is fulfilling some of the positions, this is Paul, wrestling is Kyle Linto. We should have these names. We should have, they should be here by Friday before it goes out. Have we removed the ones that we know we feel will happen? Curriculum? All right, we're okay to move to finance? Well, we're up to there, finance, no questions, we're, we're ready to... Ready to have a motion. By the way, is there someone who would like to make a motion? Thank you. Somebody said me. Thank you. So we are first and second. Okay, now, you can take a deep breath. We're having a discussion.
I just, not from the bill, it's going.
Working on the bill.
Sorry, sorry, I'm just very eager.
All right. Talking, to say something. I'm a roll for.
Facility?
Yes.
Primak, Yax, Topman, Rih, Wether, McCallie?
Yes.
The number 78 is the recommended renewal rate for all the commercial insurance assets that we have, determined by G.R. Murray, Murray's broker. There's not the once type, there are a lot of package lines on the third, on the third cloud to the right, versus by 49, 913. That should be 524, 948. So the package policy that's being recommended is going to be reduced by about 5%. We're proposing that we eliminate, away from the self-insured workers' comp to a first dollar, workers' comp, the original estimate of what that payment would be during the budget process. About $730,000, it actually came down to $530,000. Educational, educator, educators' legal liability, otherwise known as Arizona missions policy. Presently, we're paying $70,000, $70,000, say, $789 for a policy that provides coverage with a $25,000 deductible. We're proposing moving up to a better policy that has only a $5,000 deductible. Before I go into the new policy, most items that we've submitted to the educators' legal liability policy have been rejected because many of what, many of the, the issues that we deal with are at the administrative level and don't make it to court cases. So most of the coverage, most of the incidents do not have coverage. The new policy is a $25,000 deductible if there is coverage. With the new policy, we will have a $5,000 deductible. All of our special ed litigation will be covered by this. We will be reimbursed for the legal fees associated with that for about $5,000. And to date, for this year, the legal fees for special ed cases, which could be multi-year cases, is almost $45,000. So we're proposing getting, they're recommending us move to an insurance that's more consistent with what other school districts have. And it will enable us to, to fight these special ed cases. The umbrella package we have, it's basically the same coverage for almost, for more than $40,000 less with the new carrier. And G.R. Murray is recommending that our excess umbrella policy now, which only takes us up to $10 million, is totally inadequate for a district of our size. Especially, especially with the transportation accident that we had last January. And we're going to increase that by $50 million, up to, up to $60 million. So overall, we're looking at about 5% increase in premiums with a massive increase in coverage that we're really...
The bump up between 2012 and 13, 13, 14, kind of, is that, is that very similar experience?
We have very little impact.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, I know there's been a generalized increase, of course, certainly of course personalized, this is commercial.
We had more damage from Irene. We have, you know, logic...
You're saying because the insurance companies experience so much...
If you look at this entire package policy, it went up like 37% last year. And Union Beach, Union Beach lost a school for almost a year. Their coverage went up 10%. So I'm not sure, we haven't been able to explain why they're bringing it up so high last year. But ZURC certainly took advantage of that. So now we're, we would, number one, we're increasing our coverage, have the Arizona mission, where our broker recommends it to be for our school district our size. We're instituting first dollar, workers' comp. Now, the premium here is $530,000. We have budgeted next year for workers' comp 1.1 million. So whatever the difference is there, we'll go into the, to fund the unfunded claims that we talked about during the budget process of 1.4 million. Now, the actuary has advised that that 1.4 will take up to five years to pay out. So we're certainly on our way to fund that unfunded liability.
Great. Joe?
Yes.
Since we're talking about insurance, have you given any consideration to environmental pollution policies?
I believe there, there is environmental pollution in the package policy, but I'll, but I'll check.
Let's make sure, because, you know, we're finding these unknowns that are coming up. It's going to cost us quite a bit of dollars. Maybe if we can squeeze out a pollution policy, we might...
What is that policy?
Environmental pollution policies, in most cases, if you cover, will cover unforeseen issues when it comes down to environmental hazards.
The danger tank, of course, we have.
Correct, correct. And we've had an issue, now that's gone out of the hole for a few reasons. So that's something to look into.
I mean, I understand the term, I just didn't know what insurance would come with that.
Yeah, but what happens a lot, I think, there were times where the regulations, I mean, you could get out of, or whatever, you know, legal what you did. But now, in, in the upgrade of laws and the application of regulations, if it goes bad, they sort of fight the law.
Yeah, and most of the problems that we're encountering is that whoever did the work for us in the 80s, did you file for that's part of the evaluation before the final application to say that this is being mediated? So now we're in a position to have to test again. In most cases, we've tested and there's no problem. We just have to go through the filing process.
Right.
They had one case, though, behind GMC, we did have to dig and we're still waiting for results of that situation. And I don't believe we have any more tanks in the ground anyway. I think all our tanks are out of...
That we know about, we don't know, don't have any, so, don't know what's going to come back.
Well, no, those tanks were removed, those tanks were removed and we just didn't file the appropriate paperwork.
Number 10. We get a little more information on number 10.
Jean, one?
Grant years, qualification.
Karen, Karen will go, she'll go, she'll file for this grant that we gave 15 to... Karen, Karen will go, our, she has filed for this grant that we gave fifteen to her as a light of the anti-bullying legislation and general social, emotional behavioral issues that our students face. This is a grant that will support, going forward, with multi-tiered behavioral frameworks, such as positive behavior intervention, to really increase the overall school climate, you know, and again, to minimize incidence of bullying and, you know, just peer relationships and so, to really just make it a very peaceful environment.
Right. Now, if we were fortunate enough to be awarded this grant, the seven hundred, up to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, what would that fund? Would it fund more counselors, would it be more psychiatry? What would that fund if we were given that?
We're in the process of writing this grant, yeah. And I kind of tell you that we're looking at research-based programs, screen in, such as positive behavior intervention and support for P D I S, that can improve the overall school climate. I'm not familiar with all the nuances of this grant, but certainly, it's, it's social, emotional, and peer relations that focus on, well, you know, it's a warm school for everybody, you know, how we, you know, work with one another and respect one another, but, you know, the estimated available funds are twenty-three million, five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. The estimated range of awards around fifty thousand to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars per year for up to five years. And the estimated average award could be two hundred thousand dollars, and the maximum would be seven hundred fifty thousand. And there's an estimated number of one hundred and eighteen awards that would be granted. So, you know, this is something that you just couldn't turn your back on. Not, not applied for, because we can certainly always include, improve the climate of our school, you know. We, we have no idea the baggage in our kids' comp, you know, but the motivation is in times with behaviors that they cite it, and we certainly will support not only our students but our teachers, county councils, and the justice.
There's professional development.
Yes, there is professional development. That's part of any org, that we put forth, professional development.
And regarding number sixteen, I was just looking at my email that I have. You're definitely carrying this one, and I just, I wanted to check with my, my school district is an adult, and it's one forty-four seventy. So I'm going out and establishing apples, because it's my certain vision for me, for families, and again, I don't know if it's in the plan, but that's five dollars. The vision, yeah. But you do have family for this, one twenty-nine.
That's your plan?
Families, one forty-four seventy. And again, I don't know if it's apples to apples, but all of them are mine.
That's why we made it.
I just, since I had just gotten an email yesterday, I wanted to check it.
Anyone else in this section? Moving on, non-certificated personnel office. Number five. Non-certificated personnel operational.
Is, number one, the new hire, is he a current employee? And if not, why are we putting him at set four?
He's not a current employee, but he has experience.
In a top school district or a private industry?
Private industry.
In the township?
The township.
Okay, so that, that's a correct, that's why the township.
Non-certificated personnel. Elder? Certified personnel?
Nine A. It has the tenure date. Has nine to fourteen. Should be nine to eighteen.
Well, we didn't have the name yet.
No, no, I know, but, so that I could be correct when the name's put in there.
Number four. Are we looking at any more for the stuff, um, number four?
Right, we, we took a stroke. You took a stroke.
Yes.
Shots are flashing.
Right.
Just remember that fifty percent of the MIP, don't be misinformed that the military reimburses us fifty percent of the salary. The military reimburses us fifty percent of the MIP, which is the, what does that MIP stand for again? But whatever, it's their recommended salary. We pay above the record salary, recommended salary, so they only pay the fifty percent of that.
The right percent is not cooked, it's under your process.
Right.
Due to expectation, you're taking away months, so you, you pay that.
And under number nine, these blanks will be filled in. That information just came up today, and we should also be on the list for, we're going to use for taking this, without being on time Friday. I also see in number twelve, we have a duplicate, A and L should be removed. It's replacing the people that are highlighted above us. M, O, and P will be filled in. The I and J are just the next term? The month's only two months, and one is? Correct. So long. That one motion is longer. Highlight, number thirty-nine. Since we are non-certificated, I'm just gonna, considering, I don't know how it is designed as well as I did, so let, um, given, do we need a separate session to talk about that?
I don't think so.
Number six.
Number, number?
Seven. Number seven, page nineteen, number seven.
The candidate is here, and I thought it would be nice to introduce. Okay. Okay. So now, I'm putting her on the spot. We have three is being recommended for the supervisor of intervention services, Caitlin.
Hi.
This is Caitlin.
Thank you.
She comes highly recommended. Given excellent interview, excellent recommendations.
I thought you were a high school student. Well, thank you.
Any questions for her? I don't want to throw too much of a spot, but I tell you, Caitlin was, she went through a interview process where she had to do a presentation about the RTI process. And then, there was a second interview process where she had to actually present it again to me. And I was very impressed. Not, not, sometimes not easy to impress with an interview, but very impressed with her base of knowledge and understanding, and a lot of the work that she did, and her work at SAW, with the focus school, then collecting data. She's very data oriented, and understanding of how to use that data to drive students moving forward, and getting the best out of the students. With a torch of women of worth. Number seven.
I'm thinking of what, what the, the.
The great population.
It is great population. Thank you.
Have they ever seen identified?
It is identified on the salary guide. Yes, because when I looked at the salary guide, I was looking, yeah.
Number eight, I was sure that these six teachers were omitted from last month's approval.
I'm sorry.
Number eight, these six teachers were omitted from last month's approval.
Correct.
Correct. So does that do fine? So just?
No, they're just, they were not on the, I know, last month, so they were out. We've gone back and forth in this section a couple of times, so there's anybody else who's got any comments? Ready to move on? We're gonna talk the end. Okay, the closest to page twenty-nine, number forty-seven, is the end of that section. Okay, non-certificated personnel transportation, only eight, number five.
I just have that, Mr. Sidedino, number eight.
Which one is it?
Number eight, page thirty-one, we had a recent discussion about. At the top of number eight, the wheelchair stipends for transportation. This is following employees for twenty fourteen, fifteen, I believe that should be thirteen, fourteen. And my concern is some of the dates on those. If you would take a look at one.
And you're also suggesting the dates be reviewed?
I, I'm suggesting, yes, I believe that that was a matter that was addressed in some of those things.
We'll take a good look at it, thank you.
Do you know if these are going to be continuing to take place in the school year?
Well, they do.
Some of the students are the same, these are not?
No, they have to choose in the fall, so we wouldn't know if they're going to be taking place until they.
Depends on what route they have.
Correct. These are for this year's route, which they get at the end of the year.
Okay, true. All right, thank you. And number twenty-five, supplies are putting in thirty-six.
Number four. Joe, could we just like show a detail when I come on that?
Well, this is, this is computer infrastructure upgrades, it's not buildings and grounds.
And those upgrades are full service switches, wireless?
No, it's for computer, the way the internet gets distributed throughout the district is through switches and various stations. And these are switches, and these are required changes to switches in our schools. This is just technology. And Roseanne is here, if she can talk about the licensing and the content filter.
Roseanne, is this, is this hardware or software?
Uh, this is hardware, and this is some changes to our network to go to layer three switches. If you remember, not last year, but the year before and the year before that, we, we did some changes to the switches in all of the schools. Due to budget constraints at that time, we could not go to layer three switches in those three schools. The switches that this upgrade refers to are layer three switches. With layer three switches, that allows them to, to basically manage and divert traffic. If there's too much traffic on, on, through the, the network, they can, they can manipulate and divert. So that would be the last of the upgrade for all of our schools to layer three switches.
So this was part of the master plan that we put together three years ago?
Yes, and this has all been through, it's all been vetted through the technology committee. In terms of the second, the Microsoft Office pro-licensing, that represents an increase this year because we are moving towards adoption of the apps for the iPads, which will provide us with Microsoft Office. Full use of the Mike, the Microsoft three sixty-five cloud, which we have been implementing, but we have not been able to implement one hundred percent because we needed to move up a tier in licensing in order to do it. And the second refers to our Palo Alto, which is the filter, which is our content filter. We have, we had considerable issues with our filter over the Easter break when we came back and without internet quite a while. And we found out that the appliance had been damaged due to a power issue or something, it wasn't functioning right. We negotiated with the I R C, and we were able to get a free trial from Easter break to June thirtieth on the Palo Alto filter. So that's been put into place, and this represents the same cost as what it would be for Smooth Wall and Newell for next year. Smooth Wall was our other filter. So this is, there was no increase to us for this, even though the Palo Alto is a more comprehensive model, and we'd be able to eliminate another filter, our A S A filter on the system side, so they're working towards that right now.
Yeah, A S A filter, what, what does that does?
It's a secondary filter, secondary contact filter.
Does that use mostly for email?
No, it's a firewall.
So now, the Palo Alto, that's in the mainframe here?
It's here.
Okay, so all the traffic's coming back here, and the Palo Alto is going to be able to switch.
Yes, it's been working. You know, we've had some issues, I'm, the reason is because we've never implemented a filter during the course of the school year. So anytime you have a content filter, you have to do a little bit of tweaking. In, in the past, we've always did any changes in July, and during July and August, the technicians would work on tweaking the filter, you know, allowing some things, changing other things, settings. So we had a couple of weeks that were a little bit bumpy, but now, you know, they were, knock on wood, we're running pretty well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Number six. I started with the, I'm just having a discussion. I've looked at over three of the proposals, thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars, which is, as a, 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 as The White House has said it seems to be the best deal. There's a couple of things that concern me. He's asking us to go get the ASA numbers for him right away. So, I would assume I could be far away. We're not getting any of this right now. Uh, and then he's got an hourly rate of a hundred and seventy-five dollars, which would be consumed as low as twenty-five dollars. Which is only three days beyond, and of course, then it's, it's, it's an open number, so if we go to fifty dollars, it'll grow considerably beyond what the, what the other person is charging for the demographics portion of it. Uh, I, I think, I think the assessment of the buildings is a, is a key component because we've got an awful lot of new administrators, we've got about it, it's got a history as a, as a teacher himself and has been in a number of districts in this state as well. And he's got fifteen references that includes some very blue chip districts around the state, so. Me personally, I would be most comfortable with Ross Haber Associates, plus he's reduced his price from four thousand to maybe five hundred for both processes. I think what's important to do is to give him the opportunity to make up the sum of the principal for the grant. And the officials are going to be very, with, uh, the time, so I think it's a focus thing.
Thank you.
There is a history, Ross Haber was in the district before, so some of the shit is very familiar with buildings.
Frank's negative reputation, so I think we're not able to prove it.
Item number one, I was, I reworked the whole draft meeting, the third meeting in June. The business was, June is a very tense, tense month, times of the year, so we can't get prepared, so. I talked about this with a few more members already who were agreeable. Uh, so we're proposing either June twenty-sixth or June thirty, we can have that one wrap-up meeting. However, June thirty doesn't work, but maybe we'll coffee, so we'll turn it up with the June twenty-sixth. It's a, it's just a wrap-up meeting for the interview, whatever week we give it, this meeting, a next meeting. There's always things that we miss and we just...
And there's no July week meeting, so...
It would be an action meeting?
Yes, it'd be an action meeting on, on the...
So would there be an agenda prior to it, like at the regular meeting, then we'll create an agenda for the...
The Friday before, we'll send an agenda, an agenda. It'll, it, it should be a reduced agenda.
So there'll be no agenda session prior to that hour?
I'm good.
Twenty-sixth.
I think so, Thursday, Tuesday?
Thursday.
I assume there's going to be no recognition or anything?
No, not at that meeting.
So we're going to run a few more pieces of stuff.
On the bill, normally those people will be coming in from downtown late, and then you're coming to Philly City. You arrive at seven, that's a tough...
Seven is a little tough.
Whatever.
It should be quick.
It's not going to be long. No, just it'll be, it'll be another, it'll be another short build list, any personnel issues that may have been missed. I remember my business kind of...
A little bit more to change.
You don't need to recommend that before.
You're coming up to beach there.
Sal would say that Mr. and Zola was kindly enough to donate their ships. There are a lot of things that we get donated every day with the social media that we have. We do send bankies, it's a quick, you know, it's a green mail or something, you know. So, um, I would love to know if there's a way that I can, we can have some nice cards available and that we send out as bankies.
I think, you know, that's...
Just to send out something in the regular mail as opposed to just sending something you donate. So I don't know if you have a print shop, and that stuff is going to buy cards on my own, that's not the point. I'm just wondering if there's a way, I know you have business cards made up, I don't know where you get the cards from. But I don't know if you do have them.
I mean, I call it like... We can do that with...
A certificate is one thing, I'm just thinking...
I'm just focusing my attention, Mr. Ramirez. We can do it.
Can we do something, then we can have, have your bills designed something? You know, whether it's...
There are a lot of people who come across a lot of things, whether it's donating money or time or something, so... Let me tell you, those shirts match, it's a big fancy for the setting, the picture. Okay, is that all we've done?
Well, we should, we should, uh, bring the chief photo and like, I...
Yes.
That's, that's a plan. To add food.
Absolutely. This is where we got trouble. There's a moralization now of...
Master competition. Um, okay. Um, hearing of residents, any item? All right, um, Mrs. Wong, you were out, you were outweighed by somebody in the back, so, sorry.
Um, we, we attend our Shaw School and our student, our children are going to SOF next year. We submitted a letter to open up a bus stop closer to our homes. There's going to be about fifteen children that would be able to use that bus stop. I don't know if we're at the right place, if we're supposed to be here or not. Somebody told us to come here, so we came.
Well, this is a way to get heard, that's for sure.
Okay. We sent a letter to, uh...
The, the, the letter was passed on to the, uh, the board member who chairs Building and Grounds Transportation.
Mr. Dunn, raise your hand.
I have it, and he has it in his hand, and it'll be discussed tomorrow. I'd like to share your concerns tonight, because you're not available tomorrow, that's fine, or you want to come back tomorrow? That's fine as well.
Okay, well, um, we'll share now. Um, there's about fifteen students that will be going to SOF next year. Um, a couple of them, probably about nine this year, um, this current year. So, um, it was a stop that was already established when we used to go to Sandberg. And now the high school just uses it, but it just makes sense to all of us that the spot is reopened up.
And that spot is identified, I believe, on the... Yes.
Yes.
We have the information.
Yes, Cindy Shreve and, uh...
And Laura.
And Laura.
We'll discuss it tomorrow night, I'm not sure if Denise is going to be available.
She will not, but she, she's... Her staff has already been advised, so you brought it to our attention at the right time. If you were to wait until August, it probably would have been not possible, but we're going to do the best we can.
Okay, thank you.
So kudos to you, thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
It'll be discussed tomorrow.
Okay.
Can you, Rich, can someone please report back?
Absolutely, I'll, I'll answer them via email. And I'll speak with Transportation while everyone else is on it.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Mrs. Wong?
There was an incident, as many people here know, that happens at the Grade Nine Center on Thursday, and I was just wondering if there's any information that you're able to give us of exactly what happened, because evidently there must have been a panic of parents not sending their kids to school. I sent mine, because I got a call from a friend that morning about it. I was really confused, more than worried, I was confident that the kids were safe. I was just more confused about how, how the message got, got out there to parents. So if anybody can explain anything, that would be great.
I could, I could, I could share from, obviously, my experience with it and what happened. Um, information came to us late in the day after dismissal of a concern brought to us by, about a comment a student made. And unfortunately, and I cannot go into details because I'm talking about a particular student when I, when I go into it, but unfortunately, um, in this day and age, it's a very common statement, whether that brings comfort to you or not in hearing that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I was reflecting with many of my, my county peers about, you know, ten years ago, students used to call them bomb threats. Doesn't happen anymore. We, we don't get them anymore, but maybe because every phone's traced, it doesn't take out, you don't have to hold a person on the phone for thirty seconds to, to find it out who the person is anymore. I, I don't know why. But I do know because of, um, the exposure, students go right to this phrase. Because they know it gets attention. And it's commonly heard in every, in the news, on the news tonight, from Warren. So when it was brought to our attention, the, the first thing we have to do is obviously, we have a memorandum of agreement with the local law authority. And the first thing we do is contact them, reach out to the local and to the county prosecutor's office. As part of any investigation that gets done. And right from that point, it's not a, solely a district, school district investigation or problem. It's a shared, um, joint investigation. And we have to work collaboratively and we have to work within the terms of our, of our memorandum of agreement. So as information comes out, it doesn't come out just from my office, it doesn't come out from their office, it's us working together and collaborating. Everything that was received by the, um, public was in direct conversation with all authorities. And while no one would say, yes, you can do that, and you know you can't do that, everything is taken under advisement as to how to proceed, because the thing that some people understand, uh, or when social media gets hold of something, many non-truths or half-truths come out. And when doing an investigation, you may be providing too much information through the course of, um, making, making a public statement. So all of the information that did go out was, did pass through the Ober's Police Department and was taken under advisement. And at no time was any children in harm's way during that. Because, you know, unlike what happened in North Bergen, it was an anonymous threat. So you don't know where something's coming from. So it brings it to another level. In this one, the alleged threat was identified as to be a person. So we're able to identify, assess, and determine if it's a real threat or not. And at that point, we're, knowing that information, being very factual, we can determine that school was safe the next day, but the investigation was not over. And information could not go out until the investigation was over. As soon as I received the okay investigation from that, from the police point was complete, the information that went out through real time was drafted with the chief of police department and myself. And the blessing of the, um, county prosecutor's office. And that's when the information ran. So I, you know, I sent them, I, I, I understand people's concerns about, um, timing of things. Sometimes the timing of things are out of our control. And if any time the students were safe, safety was a concern, trust me, school would not have opened. If it was a concern that, you know, nothing, school would not have opened at that. The problem with many things is that, like I said, social media gets a hold of something and runs rampant before we even have a chance to investigate. Everyone has a different story, everyone has a different answer. So, um, I don't know if that answers your question any better.
It does, but what, why, I wasn't really worried. It was again, the confusion, because when I got a call from a friend, they said, check Twitter, check Twitter. I hardly ever check my Twitter, and there was a post on Twitter about it, so I'm like, well, why didn't we get a message alert? Why, why is there a Twitter posting? So that's what completely threw me off. And then I happened to be up at the school getting my nails done at the Cosmo Clinic, and then I'm hearing this announcement that there's no hall passes being. So then I started getting a little worried at that point.
The hall passes is a relationship that we have fifty teachers out that day. It had nothing to do with that, and it was at the, you know, the main part of the building for the most part, because of the number of chaperones that are going on a Disney trip, the number of chaperones where teachers are called out sick on a Friday on a very nice day, uh, in, in June. And that's what it was a relationship, related to, had nothing to do with that. So people take, things aren't related, and automatically put one, one or two together and get five. And that really wasn't the situation, the two, the hall passes was unrelated. And as far as the Twitter response, again, like I said, that was in conversation, I think that went out at like ten, eleven o'clock at night, because the local police department was getting bombarded with concerns from Twitter that were unrelated to anything the district was putting out. So the local police department said, you know, that is a good response to put out there, because it goes directly on, my Twitter feed goes directly on the district website. So it's a quicker way for me to put information on the district website than going to the webmaster at eleven o'clock at night saying, put this information on the district website. I can put something right to Twitter, that goes right to the district webpage. So you don't have to have Twitter to get the information, they want to have concerns or questions about it, go there at the time. If the vagueness of it was not intentional to keep people uninformed, but to let everyone know the school is safe, that was the main matter. School is safe, but I could not give any more investig, information about investigation because the police were conducting an investigation at the time.
Okay, so then, in the future, heaven forbid, there's going to be another incident, and likelihood that happens with large schools. Is that what happens, you would normally post a Twitter message, and then when you go through the right channels, then a message alert would then be sent out?
Again, it has to do with the terms of investigation.
Taste by taste?
Taste by taste. If it's an unknown, then the information will come to you probably in a real-time alert, come to you on the district website. But in this situation, it was not an unknown threat, it was isolated and school, school was safe on that.
Okay, thank you.
To go a little further on that, I was at the high school BTS meeting last night, and somebody asked me if there's a Board of Ed policy on social media regarding your tweet. I didn't know the answer, and I'm not sure if there is an answer, because I think you kind of answered it now, saying, I didn't even know that you're Twitter, or not, or went to the website, I thought those two were companies, but is there, I don't know, we have...
We, we have a new policy about, um, that's being drafted or driven by the Department of Education. Chris might elaborate more on that, but again, like, there's some people who have Twitter for their personal and they mix with the business. This Twitter, I don't have a personal Twitter. This, this Twitter account is directly related to the school district and only puts out school district information.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how to answer it, I'd promise I'd get back to them, is there anything more?
Sometimes it's inspirational.
There's not a lot much more you can provide. The, the social media policy restricts use of social media to district-related buildings. So it's not just free Wi-Fi for use as anyone sees fit, whereas that ties into what Dave was saying, is that he's not talking about Dave Sidedino issues, he's talking about Superbowl and the Old Bridge issue. So that would be a great example of a permitted use of social media on and for the school district.
I think the key part also, I didn't know that they would automatically defend the website, so it's not, because not everybody wants Twitter. I mean, so if Tammy has a concern, they can see that on the website.
And it's, again, that was done purposely, because it's the fastest way to get information there. If it's a real emergency, you don't have to follow Twitter to get information to go there. Now, again, if it's something, if it's something devastating or drastic, it's, it's gonna, I'm gonna wake up the webmaster in the middle of the night and say, put this, you know, put this announcement out, you know, you know. Even like, you know, weather-related stuff, you know, usually we're in contact, so it's, whether it's four o'clock in the morning or it's at ten o'clock at night, I purposely don't call her at one o'clock in the morning to tell her to do it, you know, it's, it's those time periods. But again, the purpose of that was directly, so it links right to the district website, so any information that I put out there goes right there, so anyone has access to it. Just along any...
Thank you.
Thank you.
And anyone else out there?
Again, the last thing I was going to say about that, my, my biggest concern last night were students directly texting me that were scared and worried. And that's when I contacted the police department, because I don't want my students scared or worried to come to school. It's hard enough being a teenager. It's bad enough being a teenager when that kid's scared or worried, so...
I feel bad for them, because whatever time of day that incident allegedly took...